Good evening, everybody. And to this meeting of Sandhurst Town Council's Planning Committee. Let me see, 26th of August. And I'd just like to start as always with customary introduction that allows people to understand that the Sandhurst Town Council is what's called a statutory consultee of Blacknall Forest Council. And as such, we are not called upon to make actual determinations or decisions on planning application. It is our role to examine them in the local context and against the local policies and to make recommendations to the planning authority, who may or may not accept our recommendations. That said, I'll go straight in with apologies for absence.
That's councillor, councillor Hayes and councillor Whittington.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. And any declarations of interest, members' interests, please, before the meeting starts? As such, as you members will be aware, if we come to an item on the agenda where you do need to declare an interest, you can do so at that point. And can I ask for the minutes of the Planning Committee meeting of it? And it says in the agenda, the 20th, it should say the 28th of July. Is it your wish, suppose they're proposed and they're seconded?
That was Michael and Hazel, yeah?
Yes.
Sorry.
It's all right. I'll do it now because I've often said, oh, I'll do it later and then done a run. That's it, lovely. And I noticed that we have a member of the public here tonight. And it's for the first item on the agenda, which is 52 Wellington Road. So I don't have to bring it to the front of the agenda, as is our usual custom. The first item is the 2500389, which is 52 Wellington Road, Sandhurst. And I'll begin by inviting Mr Booker, Mr Alan Booker. If you want to come and stand over here, sir. You're, as you heard from my intro, you're among friends.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, it's three minutes to go.
Yes. And then, you know. I'll just, I'll, it's three minutes. And are you okay? We give you a sort of 20 seconds to go.
No, I think it would take three minutes.
Okay, no, that's good. Thank you. Thank you very much. And in that case, are we ready?
We're ready.
In your own times.
Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to say a few things about this because it's really been worrying me. My neighbours seem hell-bent on ruining my retirement. And as all bar one of the six adjoining houses are retired people, I think they probably feel the same about having children or nurseries in the centre of us all. I get flooded with water through the fence from their soakaway whenever it rains. And the new building, according to the application form with all the boxes, will be drained into a soakaway, so that'll be even more water coming into it. I don't know whether anybody would like to see the photos I've got of the water trouble that I've been having since 17, every winter. As the winters get wetter and wetter, it all comes through to me. I mean, it's, it's so bad that I can't walk on the grass on the lawn because I sink in. The path is a continual stream of water. And in the winter, when that freezes, because I'm up and down all the time, it's quite a hazard. I've repeatedly asked for things to be done, but no, they've done what the council told them to do when they put the soakaway in, and that's all they want to do. My neighbour, Mrs Monhan, who is the owner of the house, told me a couple of weeks before this notice of a new build came to me, that she would like to give up her job as a schoolteacher and start her own nursery. This new building seems very large for a one mother and child that they talk about. And it makes me wonder if one day it will revert back and become a nursery. Thoughts of having noise and screaming all the time really fills me with horror.
I'll get them.
The nursery that has folded on the corner of Albion Road used to emit a lot of noise and cause a traffic nuisance with the parking of yet more cars in the road. But in mind, we had a school on that corner as well. So we have all the mothers and the children twice a day filling the road up with cars as well. And if next door to do, were to do the same, it'd make my life intolerable, as I spend most of my day in the garden until about three o'clock, when next door's children arrive home from school and start pounding footballs against the fence and over it, causing damage to my plants and my buildings.
Thirty seconds.
I have repeatedly asked them to try and not send the balls over and got the reply that they wouldn't stop them playing football and I should cover everything over with a net. I wonder how many people would want to move into a house that has a nursery next door? And that's me, I'm afraid.
Thank you, sir. If you'd like to take your, oh, you've got your photographs back there. If you'd like to take your seat, sir, members will be able to. Does any member, actually before you, does any member wish to ask a question at all? No, that's fine then, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you, see.
How long has this been all going on?
The water, since they moved in and put the extension on, they built the soakaway. My gardens are on a slope. The house is at the bottom and the ground goes upwards and on a slight angle to me. They put the soakaway from all the house and the new extension up the garden. So then build a concrete block wall across their garden to stop the water coming back to them. When it hits that, comes through to me.
Right. Okay, I just advised members and yourself, the soakaway and the water runoff is not a planning consideration for this application. And the reason for that is it's classified as building regs. That's why you've had the records that you've had, that the council, the building regs, you have to get building regs approval when you get planning permission. And building regs people check the drains, the soakaways, et cetera, and any such drainage systems. And then it's not what's called a material consideration in planning terms in this context. I know it's very disappointing to hear that, but it's the fact.
The box on the application form where they have to tick the various things, it says, where will the water from this new building go? And they put the soakaway.
Yes.
So that's going to add to the problem.
Which immediately isn't a planning consideration, it's a building regs consideration. That's the technical point, unfortunately.
How can I get anything done about it?
The only way, and I've often had to advise residents, is it is a civil matter. You have to initiate via a solicitor, a civil action to, to get the soakaway resolved. And you can seek to inquire as to who it was, under building regulations, approved the construction of the soakaway. And that's nothing to do with planning or council.
I spoke to planning about it before they signed it off.
Yeah.
And they said, it's supposed to be in the middle of the property and they don't seem to give any sizes or, or.
That's, and it's, as I say, it's very frustrating for us because we're feeling it for yourself and other residents. But in the context of this planning application, the soakaway and the flooding is, is not a material consideration.
Better speaking to a building control officer.
Yes.
Rather than a planning officer.
Very good advice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, 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 that's very good.
They're bringing the office first thing in the morning.
Yeah, because they're right, they're apples.
So they're either on a horse, on holiday, or they're in.
Yeah, you need to contact a building control officer. And I mean, you know, eight thirty, nine o'clock, and then they're gone.
Yeah. Thank you for mentioning parking, but.
For that advice, I wish, thank you.
Thank you very much for hearing me. Thank you. Thank you very much indeed for clarifying. The, and, and also retirement is also not a clear reason. And also, members, the F1 use of nursery is not prohibited in a residential area. And sorry, so, which is one of the.
He's gone.
No, he's probably saying he didn't have to, he could listen to, he's probably heard it. So that, in terms of the point I. Yeah. He decided not to stay. But having looked also at the highways situation, where it states that appeared to open out onto the highway, they, they're. Highway Authority has requests, requests that fourth parking space and an access gate opening onto the site. Now, I'm not in possession, we are not in possession of any amended plans. So the only plans we are basing our decision on to tonight is what we have. But the highways and parking was a main consideration of mine and access and egress. The, they, the planning, the highways officers are concerned as that it doesn't meet the parking standards. And that in order to meet the parking standards, the parking to the front of the building needs to be redesigned and therefore respect that they don't say, does not appear to have space, but they do say it doesn't at this time comply. I must also clarify a point made by Mr Booker. And that is, we have been informed that the use of the nursery block is for one-to-one single family engagement. That is the evidence we must base our decision on. We cannot consider what it may or may not become in the future. Because if either a section 73 to amend this application, or a future application to enlarge or enhance its use comes in, we will have to consider it on its merits. But the other element that the highways department has asked is that we do support the condition limiting the use to one family at a time in its. And by doing that, that means any changes that are considered, required in the future, must come back to, through the planning system for another full and further. But having said that, also the comments that were made about the parking around Albion Road, et cetera, given the actual distance away from that, the, that, the impact of a single family arriving, et cetera, is unlikely to exacerbate the problems of the residents in Albion Road, et cetera. So having examined this quite thoroughly, and having explained the things we are allowed to consider and, and are not, at this point, I'm keen on any members' input, I can find no material reason for refusal.
Yes, I have a couple of observations, if I can, with your permission, chairman.
Go for it.
Although we know the width of the building, it's the rear effect, the far end of the garden, it's 11.7 metres, I believe, and 4.1 metres wide. It doesn't actually give the height, which I'm surprised. I know that within the photographs, it shows the height of the house and one could after extrapolate how high it is, but I think it would be quite useful to actually know the height of the building. I couldn't see it on the plans that I looked at on the screen this morning. And it's really, that's an observation, chairman, that maybe could be carried forward for the case officer to observe really that the height, it's a single-storey building with a flat roof.
Yeah.
But it might be useful just to know how, how high it is. It, it's, I'm not saying it's an omission, but it would be useful to actually have that. Normally, you see with.
You're not.
Height. The other point that I would have made is that there are seven objections that were on the web as of this morning and one observation, an interest of the observation.
I've got nine.
You've got nine?
Yes.
There must have been a couple maybe put in, because one of them was actually not an objection, it was only an observation of concern from, I think it was from Brumakers in the Long Down Lodge Estate with regard to drainage and the problems of the pipe that actually runs from their estate underneath Wellington, underneath, I believe, Mr Booker's land. If not, I know it isn't, but it is, it was never, it appeared on the, on the website.
Yes.
As being an observation. The only other point I would have made, which we looked at, we looked at the, in fact, you mentioned, chairman, about the parking arrangements or the gates. The option that the highways officer said is that the gates should either open inwards in order, there should not be a queuing situation on Wellington Road, or a sliding gate. Given that these are electric gates at the moment, I imagine it's far more likely that they will actually reverse the direction of opening as opposed to removing them entirely and having a sliding gate running across. I've looked at the figures and we know that the, this is to be, as chairman said, it's a baby activity, it's one-to-one, Monday to Friday, nine until six o'clock in the evening with a lunchtime break and a morning on Saturday, nine until one o'clock. I've actually calculated that in terms of the number of movements, given that the parent is going to be driving in, dropping off the baby, then coming back at 12 o'clock or whenever to pick up the baby, and then the second session in the afternoon with another baby, it will actually represent a total of 22 movements. That I think is, is to be taken into consideration. Wellington Road is very busy and where this house is, is actually only 100 yards away from the corner of Albion Road and the double yellow lines that were there to prevent people from parking in Albion Road when they drop the children off at upland.
So where are you getting these movements from? Because it says one, it's one-on-one family, I didn't.
Yeah, but you've got, you've got two sessions, you've got a morning session and you've got an afternoon session.
Of one family.
Yeah, but it could be two families, but my understanding is that the.
One family in the morning and one family in the afternoon.
That's what I understand. So you drive in, drop the child off, reverse out, so drive out. So that's, that's two movements effectively. And you will then have two movements in the afternoon, because you're dropping the child off and then picking them up.
Oh, that's, that's.
It's, it's, you're, you're dropping the child off and then you're picking them up. In the afternoon, you're dropping the child off and picking them up. So effectively that.
Plus Saturday, yeah, 20.
And then, and then only one session on Saturday, so that represents 22 movements. I just mentioned that because that's a mathematical figure. Other than that, I'm going to say it, it, we aren't looking, as the chairman said, at the building as proposed in terms of a one-to-one. And I personally can't, like the chairman, can find no basis on which we can find a reason to refuse it, because it, it is a modest proposal.
Well, I, I was looking at it because, because as, as the gentleman said, as the, the way it's going to be used, because in the thing it says baby classes, I picked, the proposal represents an undesirable intrusion of a business use into a residential area, which by reason of noise and general disturbance would be detrimental to the amenities currently enjoyed by local residents. I felt that that fitted quite well within this scope, because they are setting up a business, aren't they?
Yes, definitely. It's a commercial activity.
Residential area. And at the moment, yeah, that, that could cause a noise and disturbance to the local residents. So I felt that that fitted that quite well. And I was also, depending on what our decision is, I would like a condition imposed restricting it not to be used for habitable use.
Yes, I'd agree with, because it's got a toilet, it's got, it's got, it's got the provision, it could potentially, if the applicant was minded, to provide a self-contained annex.
So that was my thoughts on the application.
Well. Any other input? Because I, my thoughts are that, as I did mention, because I checked from all the letters that, I went through all the letters that were on the planning portal. And the use class was queried and as F1. And so I wanted to check whether that is an acceptable use in a residential area. And it is, that it is. And in the absence, actually, of any noise figures, because the other numbers we don't know is exactly how many children will be at that location. If it's one family in the morning and one family in the.
Yeah, that family. They have two.
Exactly. So we have no way of assessing the level of noise. Okay? So that's what, I was examining the health and wellbeing implications in, in that context. And we cannot determine the, the volume of noise that will be from a, a single family.
Boys and general disturb.
And general disturbance, yeah. So that bit I found, I couldn't just saying, well, because it's children, it's going to be noisy. There is another element, the actual physical site is within 100 metres of a primary school. So there will be generated decibels as even background of a, a primary school at key times during the day.
Yeah, I think when you're moving.
Rather a lot of children.
Yeah. When you move into an area, oh, it's nearby a school, that's all right, little Johnny can go by himself or something's let you accept, not, not necessarily a neighbour to set up a business.
Yeah. So I, I couldn't, I thought it was assumptive by saying, there's going to be children there, the noise will be intolerable. I, I couldn't hang my hat on that one. What I do believe is that whilst I don't believe there is sufficient, there are sufficient material grounds for refusal, I do believe we should apply conditions. And those conditions, if I may suggest, starts with, and I'll, I'll start with councillor Hills, one of not to be used as a habit or dwelling at any time, to a condition limiting use to one family at a time. Right? The condition supporting the highway authority's request for a fourth parking place and access gate opening inwards to the site. And those are the conditions that I believe can be justly and properly attached. Is there anything?
There is just one question, it's coaching me, it might just, while we're listening presumably, a lot is, do we know the maximum size of a family?
No.
That we're talking.
We don't need to.
And is that, I don't know.
No, we don't need to. It's not, it's not a material consideration.
I said 22 kids in county.
That was what I was.
There was another one on the way.
That one, yeah, yeah. No, but, and there is no statement in, on the application form, et cetera, as to the, a maximum size of a family. But, so that's my consideration. So my proposal is that there are, we make no material comment or objections, right? But apply the aforementioned conditions. Is that seconded?
Yes.
Are we, is seconded? Okay, councillor Brussels, councillor Brussels.
Different.
Okay.
It's in sense, isn't it?
Yeah. It's in such. Yeah, yes, it's, okay. So that being duly moved, all those in favour, please show.
I'm in this because I am a sober, I'm in this, I'm not.
Sorry?
My part of this, because.
It's a whole vote.
You're a sub, can I please find half wheel? Half wheel.
If you're a sub, vote.
You're a sub, you're in.
If you're a sub, you'll vote.
You're a sub for Oldsmore. Because Paul W is not here, he represents Oldsmore, so.
Yeah. All right. Right. Thank you for that. That was, that was very useful, having. Member of the public, come in, right, we'll move on.
You know, he was born in the house he's living in.
Yeah, I know, we don't find many.
Born in that house. Born in number 50, he was born in number 50, that's really.
I know, he's, he is a real Sanders.
Yeah.
I'm going to move us on swiftly then to the next item on the issue, which is 003904, which is 18A Merton Close, Halsmore. And there was a.
There's a bit of history with this.
There was some history.
Tell us with it.
Previously.
Why chaired the meeting? But under a different planning application under.
Yes.
Yeah, I've got, I've got it down on the.
It seems the agent inadvertently submitted a second application, not realising he'd submitted on previously submitted. So it looks like a double. So well said. I'm glad, yeah, you've just reiterated the interruption, that it is a duplication in error by the agent. But there are no significant changes to the one previously submitted. And, and I had a detailed look as well, because there was, I was getting comments about the character of the area, et cetera. Character of the area, et cetera, and, um. I couldn't myself see how it was, now, because it's retrospect, how it was. Significantly detrimental to the character of the area.
Couldn't find, because they said about the, um. Exterior finish.
Yeah, it's the brick, it's just slightly, it's just slightly different, because if you look, chairman, that's the current one, and that was the one in the stoss. Where it makes reference, if you look at the wording, direction of a single story. Conversion of front canopy, which is a tape, which is not on that one, and also the additional planning adding to the dwelling. So it does seem that there's a subtle difference between the two. Which I think is maybe what Hazel was alluding to.
Now, this, this picture and this bottom, um, yeah, is that, is that what they're saying it is now?
It's retrospective, so presumably. Retrospective, so.
It's existing.
Yeah, so retro.
It's just so different from anything else in the street. Some of them are clad with wood in the upper sections, some of them have got. Ring rendering finish for all of them, but none of them have got that style of finish. So it's keeping, it's odd in the street. That's my opinion.
If there were no objections from the residents, which is surprising. You know, one would have thought they would have been contacted by the case officer.
They're still contacted by the case officer.
We, we can only, we can challenge other departments. Uh, but, uh, in my consideration here is, is that of. Such a variation as to rendered it, render it out of character in that setting. Given, this is where I was looking at it from the end of the street down towards, given that it's. Predominant backdrop off to the left outside of it is trees and, and shrubbery and. And so it's not, it's not an eyesore sticking out of it. Uh, everything else is the same, in my view. And I'm, I'm happy to be convinced otherwise, because you've got brick, you've got the different colours. You've got cladding, you know, because you've got, uh, uh, tile cladding. Et cetera, et cetera. So you've got multiple cladding surfaces in the road.
There's no consistency in terms of the appearances, I suppose.
Yeah, so my, uh, my recommendation therefore, uh, was that. Uh, um, given the comments I've made was that, uh, no. Uh, material comments or objections, should we be considering any otherwise?
Maybe it's seconded, isn't it?
Seconded by councillor Brussels.
Okay.
Uh, anybody else wish to speak against the motion?
So, I mean, I can't, I can't see any reason, you know, if you look at the reasons.
I've had a dig around.
That there isn't, uh, as much as it's quite different from anything else in the street, there isn't a valid planning reason. To refuse it.
I couldn't find one.
It's, it's, we're being subjective, basically, so it's.
It's been moved and seconded, smart, so all those in favour of the recommendation. That again is unanimous, thank you very much. Someone. And we are catching on to, uh, double O four O eight, twenty-three squirrel close. Proposed single-story rear extension and conversion of existing garage into storeroom. And enlarged utility room. This one makes the, the whole of the corner of, uh, of the squirrel close area and. Just make sure I've got the right bits of paper for it, yes, and again, from my examination. Of it, I can find no material reasons uh for uh refusal. Anybody else?
No, I would say I would agree that it was straightforward.
Hmm, yes.
Yep, it's an extension to the.
It's a modest extension, yes.
All right, okay, so, um, I'm moving no material comments or objections, is that seconded? Oh, that's awesome, this is awesome. Uh, or the motion has been moved and seconded by councillor Mrs Mossam, all those in favour? Again, unanimous, thank you. Moving on. To Sylvia, double O three seven seven four, seventy-four Silver Hill. Change of use of land to use as parking and garden. So, uh, this one, I thought was fit. I probably took the most over time researching uh over this, because uh this one. Um, um. Is, i- is a street scene and character of the area issue.
Because they, they don't own that land, do they? Do you see in the red line on the, oh, they do.
They, yeah, they do.
Yeah, they do.
If you read the story, the story is, it was owned by, uh, Abrey. Which is interesting, because on the application form, it says the ownership is still with Silver Homes. Abrey became, uh, Silver Homes became Abrey. And, uh, Silver Homes were, uh, Bracknell Forest Housing beforehand. So it was owned by a housing association, right? And that, uh, will have been classed as, and this is open amenity land.
Yeah, the joint. Open amenity land.
Right, and, uh, and so, uh, uh, from my understanding, it's. Uh, there's, uh, caravan, uh, uh, parked there. At the moment, I'm, I'm told, I didn't visit the site, but, um. Uh, the principle of parking there. Are we, we, this, uh, uh, the principle of parking there. It is suggested in the application. Uh, has been established since nineteen ninety-seven, when the, then the place was owned by. Then Bracknell Forest. Um, now, I, I've looked at all that and, uh, um, the, uh, uh. I don't have the actual ownership map from that period. Um, uh, the interesting thing in the application. Uh, that causes me, in the application, it states. That there, uh, will be, uh, the need for foul sewage by mains connection. Uh, so, and I'm thinking, why would you need, uh, foul sewage? Uh, connection on a parking area. Now, if it's got a mobile home on it, a caravan, mobile home. Then, uh, there is, uh, an indication that, uh, the site. Uh, may be, uh, uh, being considered as. Uh, a parking for a mobile hu- caravan.
Have you seen the objection letter?
Yeah, I've seen it.
Because he mentions camper van and two commercial vehicles pop there already.
Hmm, yeah, it was the camper van stroke caravan.
Yeah.
Uh, that, uh, uh, made me investigate and look at the application in a lot more detail.
Exactly.
Now, there's a couple of other, uh, interesting points, uh, the, uh, um. Is it an appropriate use of amenity land? The fact that it has been used as that for a long time, right? Is a consideration, but it is not a, a sound material. Consideration, right, uh, because if, uh. What is now being proposed is that that will be permanent.
Hmm.
Right, then, uh, we have a different matter to consider. As to whether that is a loss of amenity land. And whether that will have an adverse impact on the character of the area. Uh, so the other element, uh, that, uh, also, uh. Needs to be considered is that, uh, there is a footpath, and if you, if you look on. Uh, Google Earth, the picture actually has a pedestrian on the footpath. What the footpath does not have is a dropped curb. Whilst it is not an offence to access your own property over a path. Without appropriate drop curve, et cetera, uh, it can be considered unsafe.
Hmm.
Right? And that even the highway code talks about, uh, uh, accessing your own house. With, if you're going across a path, with care, et cetera. This also happens to be very close, when you look at this, that's, if you come back a bit, there you are, no, that's.
That's the amenity land, where that.
Yeah.
The advantage.
Pink farm, yeah.
Where that, that's, no, no, that's, no, no, come back a bit, I just.
Come back a bit, turn around a bit, that's.
That's, that's the, where that blue, where that blue vehicle is, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, is that amenity land?
Yeah, and that's what they're, they're saying is amenity land, which it is, which I would call amenity land. Right?
So historically, would that not have been, um, grass?
Sorry?
Would that not be grass?
Would have been, but we've no, this is why I say I couldn't find when it had been paved over. Uh, et cetera, and turned into, uh, hard standing for parking.
Hmm.
Right, and, um, so, uh, the. You, what you'll see behind the blue bins is the turning into the road. So that is very close, so you've got vehicles coming across the pavement at that point. Uh, accessing and egressing, a mobile home and commercial vehicles, right, according to the evidence. Coming across that bit of green or out, reversing out only.
Not a dropped curb on the, there.
That's a dropped curb, where the edge of a path. That's not a.
That's not for the.
It will be for wheelchair access.
That's for wheelchair, yeah, that's, that's a pedestrian, um, levelling arrangement. It's not a dropped curb to facilitate access.
So they're actually driving over the footpath then?
So they, now, they're driving, that's useful, because it shows they're not driving over the green strip. Right, and you think, oh, that's good, but if you just look.
Must discourage it.
So they must be driving over the.
That's pedestrian.
That, that's what they're doing, yeah, there you are, there's the picture with the person.
That's true.
Hmm, so you can see a person on the path there, and if somebody was manoeuvring there. Um, that's going to get technical, is it not? In my view, so, um, the. Uh, my recommendation at this stage, um, is that we recommend refusal.
Yes, yes.
Uh, inappropriate use of amenity land. Unsafe for pedestrians using the footpath. Proximity, uh, highway safety. For vehicles manoeuvring close to the T junction. Does any other member have a, a suitable?
Could you include on that the fact that the, oh, yeah, so it's that pedestrian?
Yeah. It, right, yes, uh, and, uh, the only access. Access is, is that.
The path.
The pedestrian footpath.
Yeah. Which is not a dropped curb.
Yeah. Which is, is not.
Pink farm.
The, or more dropped curb.
Because I think the hatched area, which the, the ball type arrangement, is that not to help upline people? Actually be aware of when they approach the curb?
Yes, visually impaired are.
It's not for wheelchair use as such, it's actually, I think, for partially sighted people, so they know that they're approaching the edge.
Are you okay, game?
Okay, there is one that says, the layout does not comply with the local planning authority's standards in respect of highway design. I think of crossing over the pavement to get the access to the.
Well, I, I, yeah, um.
It's probably combine the two.
Well, it's, it's not safe, is it? Uh, uh, and I don't think, uh, we'd be, uh, considering it clearly if we didn't. Uh, get this examined carefully.
Yeah, because clearly they have to drive, they drive in, but they also have to reverse out.
Yeah.
Which I think is, I think the reversing out is almost more of a safety issue, because you're not going to see a pedestrian.
Yeah, okay, so was, was my input there sufficient?
Yes.
So, this one, okay, if you need to, okay, uh, so my, the, uh. Recommendation then is for refusal on the points that I have made, uh, is it seconded?
Yes.
Councillor Butcher.
Adding that, the, quite the use that Hazel said, are we not having that in it? So did you?
Yeah, yes, we'll put.
Seven one four.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it is highway, highway design, um, or lack of.
Yeah.
Um, yes, uh, and that was seconded by councillor Butcher. Uh, it's been proposed and seconded refusal on the grounds that I've mentioned, uh, all those in favour? That was unanimous, thank you very much. And, uh, moving on swiftly, the St Michael's Road. Uh, double O four one five full, uh, proposed ground floor side extension. Infill porch and full with rear dormer extension replacing existing dormer. Roof extension, first floor gavel extension, and extension of existing dormer to front, so.
Yeah, right.
Probably one of the few ones that hasn't been the subject of adaption in.
Yeah.
It is ripe for development, I, my.
Possession has been set around there.
Well, that's.
See, I, I walk around there regularly.
I, my, my, one of my research conferences, not out of character, because you can't pick, you, you can't. Pick, uh, a streets.
They're, they're unique in their own way.
The uniqueness of street scene, that this would be compromise, so I, I, um. Uh, I, I couldn't, uh, in my researches, come up with any material reason. Uh, for, um, uh, refusal, so. No, no members leaping in with something I've missed, uh, so I'm going to, uh, move that no comment or objections. That's seconded, no, councillor Mossam, okay, it's been proposed and seconded. Yes, comments or objections, all those in favour, please show, again, unanimous. Lovely, and moving on, uh, to seventeen Brewmakers. uh to seventeen Ruhemakers, double O four two nine. Uh, proposed two storey side rear extension and front porch extension following demolition of existing detached garage plus changes to fenestration and porch to front. Uh. Uh. Uh, now, what's interesting here is uh the highways input. Um, says the proposed four bed property requires three, according with the councils, uh three car park, the submitted parking plan cannot be accepted as the side on rotated parking space, the southmost space, does not have the required six metre turning depth in accordance with the manual for streets. The applicant will need to extend, da 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 da, therefore the highway requests amended plans. We are not in possession of amended plans, and having had the discrepancy drawn to our attention, uh I uh uh and with the the highways uh uh manoeuvring uh being somewhat difficult there, uh I'm going to suggest refusal uh on non compliant parking grounds.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but if you look at the parking layout, we've seen some that are equally as tight in the past, haven't they?
Yeah, no, we, absolutely.
Yeah.
But the only evidence I can go on is is the highways of.
Highways instead.
It ain't enough. Right, now, the.
Yeah.
Highways, that's all, highways aren't saying no, they're saying rejig it and.
They're proposing an alternative effectively.
Yeah, not, not against just rejig it.
Plans we've got are the ones we have to say no to. That's the technical point I have to make. So I'm afraid I do have to, given that highways has stated that it does not comply with uh SPD from twenty sixteen, the council's parking standards, I have to uh recommend to you members refusal on non compliant parking grounds. You think it could be in the sure and certain expectation that the next time we see this, it'll have the plans properly drawn with the parking.
But may well be an amendment to the existing plan as opposed to a new planning application.
Yes, yes.
Which suggests that we might not then see it, if it comes.
There's lots of makers.
Sorry?
In the past. Yeah, it, that like for development, adding.
Yeah, we've done lots.
Second law or.
Yeah, absolutely, but as I say, uh we've been informed that by one of the statutory, other statutory consultees, that it doesn't comply with parking. And uh I'm sure uh if in our refusal on non compliant parking grounds is my recommendation, if that goes through, then it it should encourage the uh uh the case officer to contact the applicant and get an amendment in it.
Hmm, yeah.
So my uh proposal is refusal on non compliant parking grounds. Is that seconded?
I'm happy seconded, councillor Brossard.
Yes. And that's, because there is the requirement for the, that's all we can say on this, so all those in favour, thank you again.
For unanimous.
Thank you.
Other than that, Hazel.
That's all been done.
Good.
Well, if you've got two cars.
Surprisingly, in some ways, though, that the councillor, the applicant didn't consider that when submitting the application, the agent would be familiar with.
That is very much.
And for the extent.
I see how they could do two cars.
I don't know, but we've had to go with the evidence, so I'm, yes, I'm just going to move aside very quickly. Yes. To the neighborhood plan update. And uh it is a short update, because I'm pleased to say that uh the working group has completed drafting the uh 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 neighborhood plan policies. And uh I've received from uh Bracknell Forest uh and early response as to um uh advice they have given us as to the wording of it. And uh in a few weeks' time, we will submit it back to them uh under what's called the Regulation fourteen, and that will come out as a Reg fourteen consultation. And uh at this point in time, uh the councils through council, through the working group, will contact all statutory consultees and neighbouring authorities that Bracknell Forest recommends to us. We will also contact all those people who during the first consultation said they wish to be consulted again, so we have their names and we will do that. And we will also uh be making sure that all councillors are asked individually to comment on the policies that are contained in the neighborhood plan. Uh, so that uh uh when it does finally come back for ratification, uh members can't say, oh, I didn't know anything about, you will all be asked uh to uh read the neighborhood plan, read the policies. Uh, and if you have any worries, discrepancies, thoughts, get your comments in during the Reg fourteen and that way they can be taken into account, et cetera. Uh, apart from that, we are now probably looking at having something to present to an inspector uh at the end of the summer in a couple of months' time.
So it's taking a long time, hasn't it?
It is, it's not as long as some.
It is a complex process, very, very complex, we have to be compliant with the rules.
But thi- this process that we have to go to is dictated and and we make sure that we do it. And then we make sure that uh as many people, residents, businesses, organizations, schools, churches, all, all these people have had the opportunity to give input. When we've done that, they'll be
Yeah.
uh ready to.
Attention Mike's point.
That's, that's the update for the neighborhood plan. Uh, I note, item nine says that we will next come together on the twenty ninth of September, uh uh so please enjoy your summer.
Thank you.
After it.
After that.
Yeah.
It's.
It finishes tomorrow.